It's about me, Dan. Will you stand with me, please? We're kind of short tonight. We have David Mock, he's on Zoom. And Ron Day, Billy and Tyler having some tests late this afternoon. She's been real, real sick here lately. So he won't be here. Paula has a little health problem, she won't be here. So this is what we have to deal with tonight. So, okay, I'll call a meeting in order. And I'm going to ask Dr. Charlie if he will. A pleasure meeting.
All right, thank you for today. For this opportunity we have to serve. It's a pleasure to take care of your business appropriately.
Thank you, Dr. Charlie. All right. Any public comments? Hearing none. I will move on to item number three and call on the president for his report.
I have more accurate information for the fall semester enrollment. And I'm going to let Dr. Spazera present that information. You have a copy of that, a hard copy of that in front of you, I believe. It doesn't look as good as I had thought it would or wanted it to, but it is what it is.
So as of today, right now, looking at our enrollment, we're sitting at 4.1 down in enrollment. The things we consider is we still have eight week two enrollment that we're looking at. And we also have another vocational TD CJ cycle that will have enrollment for before this cycle is over. So at the October board meeting, we'll have what's considered more of a final where we are with the enrollment. I just want to point out a couple of things. If you look across the bottom at our enrollments, it looks like, let's take dual credit, for example. If you look at dual credit, it does look like we had a drop in enrollment. But in fact, we actually really went up. So I want to make sure everybody understands what the multiple locations mean. So a multiple location, those 1266 students, that means that those students are sitting in more than one modality. So it could be a dual credit student and an online. It could be an Athens face-to-face and a Terrell face-to-face. So it could be any combination of it. So that's what the multiple locations means. And right now, we don't really have a good way to pull that number out to see where those 1266 students truly lost. So just wanted everybody to know that. We actually, our contact hours is at 94.7%. And this is primarily due to the increase in the fact that we have workforce back on campus and then also workforce classes at our high schools. We also have, I believe it's 61 exactly, additional students in our residential dorms. And that's even with one residential hall closed at this time. And if you look at the second page, we wanted to show you kind of the breakdown between academic and workforce. And you can see the difference there. We have 4,236 enrolled in academic and 1740 enrolled in workforce courses. However, this graph does have duplicate enrollment. So we have students that are sitting in both academic and in workforce courses. So that's why that 5,976 is different than the 5,591 on the first page. And lastly on here, you can look to see, we don't have a lot of information yet from our surrounding colleges. But Tammy Diddy, who's our associate vice president for enrollment management, was able to go out into the state website and pull some of the colleges that have reported. So they're listed here. I wanted to specifically point out Alvin Community College. Alvin Community College is another college in Texas. There's three of us that have TBCC programs. And you can see they're down 11%. And Cisco's down 4.9. And then the other three that are listed there have a slight increase. I believe, even though we're showing 4.1 decrease right now, I believe that the margin of our decrease is going to shrink. I do believe we will be down a little bit in enrollment, but it's not going to be as significant as 4.1.
And anybody have any questions for Kristen or for Dr. Parnell? Again, we'll provide you a greater, better number in October, the October board meeting or before that, actually. We'll probably get some additional information. Dr. Parnell?
I would just say that up until the second round of COVID was coming back through, we were not ahead of last year. And I think the COVID frightened some people, either who didn't want to live on campus or who didn't want to take all online classes in, which they probably feared would happen. So I think that's one of the reasons that we're down the 4.1%. I don't think we would have been anywhere near that far down had we not had a second round of COVID.
Anybody have any questions? If you do, just let us know. Send us an email. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Next on was, I wanted to provide a COVID update. And I think Dr. Reed is on the line here in Zoom call.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
She has, let me tell you, she has done an unbelievably great job of keeping us all updated on what we need to do, where we need to go, and how we need to handle it. So Helen, if you don't mind, by the way, I think Saturday was Helen's birthday. So happy birthday, Helen.
Thank you. So the first week of the semester, I think we had 22 positive cases, 26 the second week, and then 33 the third week. But I'm happy to report that the fourth week was 16 and last week was six. So we're definitely on the downward slope. So that's really good. I know what we're seeing in the nursing program, a lot of the nursing students that are being exposed is because of their kids getting it. And so they're having to quarantine. I know we still have a few of the athletics that are getting it, but we definitely are on the right track.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Reed? We were at a retreat last Thursday afternoon doing some artwork at the retreat. And that's not all that they did, but that was kind of the fun part of it. She got a call right in the middle of doing her artwork about a COVID case. So she's dealing with it all the time. Thank you so much for everything.
Doc, Helen, are, is there any places in Terrell that's giving shots?
Yes, I know the National Guard's at the shops at Terrell. So they're giving shots, they're giving the Pfizer shots there. And of course, you can go to any Walgreens or CVS or Walmart, any of those, they all have the vaccine as well.
And by the way, I think you guys probably know, but we did give vaccinations on campus, this campus, Thursday a week ago. And then I think they're giving, in a couple more weeks, they've got it again scheduled. So hopefully we'll, we didn't get as many as I had hoped that we would get week before last. But we're going to strongly encourage, just encourage, especially our athletes and others to take advantage of that. I think we're going to encourage our coaches to encourage them to take advantage of that. So I think that may help.
We had our second, our second nursing student that was in the hospital for about three weeks. She got out of the hospital, thank goodness, but she said she thought she was going to die.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on then. Dr. Parnell and Dr. Spazera, one of the things we had told you back, I guess last April or May, maybe, is that we were going to provide you an update on SIM. And I know that Dr. Parnell did a really good job of doing that before. And they're going to give you a kind of an update on where we are with that. So if y'all are ready.
Sure. And just as a reminder, Dr. Spazera and I are co-chairing the SIM committee. So that's why we'll be tag teaming here a bit. But what you have in front of you and what you see on the screen up there is something that I put together for our senior staff to sort of share with them sort of what the expectations were from the senior staff perspective. We've talked a lot about what's expected from the SIM committee, the recruiters and all sorts of other folks. But this was something that was really designed for our senior staff on campus. So the first part of this presentation really does gear itself to what was expected. And where are we going to change that slide? Thank you. I don't know if you can see the slide, but I believe you have it at your desk, too. Is that right? Okay, perfect. You can see what this is. And I don't want to take a lot of time, your time, to go through all of this. But basically, some of this is a rehash about what I mentioned to you the last time we talked and what SIM was all about. So on this first slide, you can see the SIM principles to guide SIM activity. Basically, the things that are the most important part about SIM and what they can, kind of why that they're important. So we can just look at a couple of these. One of the things is establish clear goals. One of the most important things that a college can do is do the work to find out what the college should be looking at as far as enrollment is concerned and set a goal to get to that level. That's hugely important. The fact that this is a funding generator is also very important because one of the things that we see in higher ed is often that the model, the funding goes up and down depending on what's out there. SIM will allow us to flatten those curves a bit. And that's one of the things we want to make sure happens. And probably one of the, I guess, probably the most important thing is SIM is all about promoting student success at all levels. And that's why this presentation is so important. Because we want the senior staff to understand, yes, it's about money. Yes, it's about numbers and the seats. And yes, it's about all those things. But we'll have those things if we have student success. Students will be retained longer, they'll graduate quicker, and they'll want to be here more because we're doing the right things for the students. So you can take a look at the rest of those when you give your time. And, but that is probably the most important one out there. And we've got to keep that first and foremost in our minds. Sorry. Okay. This next, the supporting concept, again, I kind of went through these briefly when we met last time. I will point out two things on this list. And unfortunately, mine's in black and white, so they're all the same color. So I believe it's the first brown one comes down, which is the third one down. And that is that, this is what a point we had to make with senior staff is SIM involves everybody. It's not something that you can do with one department or another department. It really has to be a cross-campus, cross-college effort because we all need to be on the same page doing the same things. Oh, I thought that was thunder. And because we reported being down 1%, I will call your attention to the very last one that says SIM is not a quick fix. It's not going to be something that we're going to turn around a decline overnight. But it will happen, so.
And also keep in mind that the SIM activities that we are, they're very data-driven. And I think that's important for us to make sure that we point out as well that the decisions that we make are not just what we think we want to do. It's going to be focused on our actions.
And I'm looking at my time and I've used five minutes already. And I was told I had 15 minutes, so I'm going to speed up a little bit. The success hinges upon all of those things in the following. And really, none of those are sequential, none of those are first, second, third. It's all of those things have to happen. And again, that's one of the reasons we wanted to meet with the senior staff and faculty on campus so that they would know these things. And then we have finally, this one, I will spend a little bit of time on, on the next slide. That's the expectations of TBCC leadership. There you go. Thank you. The first one, the phrase is strategic enrollment management and campus leadership are the same thing. Because neither one will work without the other long-term. It's also very deeply dependent upon the proactive buy-in of all the people on campus. Again, we've had a lot of efforts on this campus and all my other campuses where one group would try to go out and make some things happen, but they were isolated efforts and they weren't part of that whole synergy of the whole campus. So that's why they don't work. But when it is the whole campus and everyone's moving in the same direction, that's what makes SIM actually work. Leadership must encourage collaboration. This is not a, I'm going to beat you, I'm going to have more people than you get or anything like that. It really works because we've worked together. And I see some of you shaking your head. You understand that everything works when we're all working in the same direction. This, the fourth one here, I think is hugely important because a lot of times in higher ed, we don't do this. But it really, SIM really requires us to be entrepreneurial and be sort of a risk taker. Because if you keep doing, I learned this one time ago, if I've always done what I've always, if I always do what I've always done, I'll always have what I've always had and I'll always be what I've always been. I mean, so we've got to do different things if we want to have a different result. And so we've got to try new things. And some of them may be a little off the wall. But we've got to be willing to try those things and look for that ROI that we get back from those. And then of course, leadership must have the expectation that data-driven, as Dr. Spazera mentioned, and it's mission-driven. So it all flows down from our mission. And we all take our walking papers from the data that we get out of this. And just, that part was what we did for the senior staff. Now this part is kind of for you. I think I came here probably sometime in March and we hadn't even had our first, maybe we had just had our first SIM meeting. We were all excited about that, it was great. Well, that was about six months ago. And I think at that point, I promised you that we would have drafted our SIM plan, or at least the first portion of the SIM plan, in six months. And I can say that we have done that. We've got about an eight-page first draft of the basic SIM plan. And I'll share some more about that with you later. But, so we're right on track. And that's with losing about 20% of our meetings because of different things with scheduling issues. So, and just so you know, there's over 20 members of the SIM team, all faculty, they're faculty and staff. And we have members from every campus out there. And we've been having bimonthly meetings for the most part since that March 29th. So that's almost exactly six months. What have we been doing in those six months? Well, the first several of those meetings were getting organized. I brought in a man named Dr. Jim Black in to have to talk with us about SIM and about how we can make that work. But one of the biggest first things that we did was we did a SWOT analysis to find out where we need to be working. And what you'll see on the next pages are the areas that, we call them areas of focus. And you'll see that number one, it talks about building an infrastructure. You want to talk at all about this one?
Well, I will say that one of the things with the SWOT analysis that we looked at is we took everybody's comments and tried to put them into groups. And almost every single person that participated in this made a comment about the fact that we don't have the setup currently in order to allow us to grow certain programs. And so it's important for us to not just add for the sake of adding, but to look at our current structure and determine how we can restructure things in order to give us that room to grow that we need.
And that's what I refer to as infrastructure. That's me, and it can be something very, very small. I mean, one of the things that came out of this is a campus beautification committee. Because people said, you know, the campus is great, it's got everything we need, but can we make it prettier? And, you know, that's not a bad thing when people spend their money here willingly. I mean, to make it nicer for them, give them a few more things, you know, give them a couple swings out there, more picnic tables or something like that. So we are looking at all areas on the campus for that infrastructure piece. And you can see some of the ones that have been highlighted already. And I can just walk down a few of those with you. I'll leave the instructional programs to you. But the recruiting piece, we are totally, totally reworking our recruitment strategies around all of our ISDs. And what I've asked our recruiters for is sort of a scouting report on every ISD. What are the positives, what are the negatives? What can we gain? What are we going to lose? All that. Our website is much better than average. But it probably has a few issues because we probably need to be looking at it more about recruiting students than about some of the other things that are out there. Marketing, you guys were nice enough to give us a position so that we can double our marketing efforts. And that's going to be one of the biggest impacts, I think, we have from SIM. Student experiences, we are now having an event for students, a major event on campus every single week. And that's just from our student life area. We're also working with SGA, Student Government Association, for them to plan their own events as well. So they're doing that as well. Our retention committee is formed and they're looking at the infrastructure pieces of that. One of the things they're looking at is can we go out and sort of evaluate incoming students and say, you're a platinum, you're a gold, and you're a silver. The platinum, I couldn't stop you from graduating if I tried. The gold's probably going to graduate, but we might need a little bit of help. And that's the first one we want to focus on to some degree because they're the ones that are going to really struggle. And so we're trying to figure out how to encapsulate those categories and have those students get the help they need to graduate and stay here. Facilities and of course, we mentioned all the other things here, too. But that's focus area number one. Focus area number two is all about safety and security. A lot of the students are telling us things about it's too dark on campus, we're afraid to walk on campus at night through certain spots where the light doesn't penetrate and we're afraid. I know the students have talked about, you know, different things where there's sort of safety hazards that are out and about that we may not notice, but they do because they walk all over the place. Well, this particular area of focus is going to be handled by our police department. And not just the police department in Athens, but the police department, all of our campuses. They're going to be looking at this, they're going to be walking through campuses daily on their shifts. They're going to be, at night, they'll be looking for lights that are out, dark areas on campus. During the day, they'll be looking for hazards and things that, tripping hazards, things like that. So that's, while that's a SIM goal, we're keeping it a little bit separate because it's mostly with safety and security. That's our second one. And that was a concern not only in the students, but parents as well.
Well, and interestingly, we just finished the faculty retreat last weekend. And this was one of the areas of concern that came up from the faculty, how dark it is on our campus and how concerning it is for our students to be here at night on all of our campuses, not just the Athens campus. So even though we haven't formally talked about SIM campus-wide, TBCC-wide, the message is getting out.
Right. And after we talk with you tonight, answer all of your questions, tomorrow or the next day, we'll be sending something similar to this presentation out to all faculty and staff on all campuses, letting know which direction we're going to be taking with the SIM program. Focus area three is probably what you would traditionally consider what a strategic enrollment management plan would have to do to deal with. And that's the recruitment, retention and recruitment of students. And so that's pretty standard. We're going to be working in a number of different areas on campus with this, not only dual credit, retention, marketing, I mean, all sorts of different places across campus. We'll be working on these. And they'll be joining those committees together to reach for the solution from a lot of different ways. And then finally, focus area four. Students, staff and faculty told us during the SWOT analysis that we have a lot of processes, a lot of policies, a lot of different things that we follow on a day-to-day basis that are confusing. And so one of the things that came up right to the fore that if we want students to understand our processes, we better figure out how to understand them all ourselves. And so one of the things that we'll be working on is how to detangle some of those processes so that we can explain them better to students. So that's the fourth area of focus. And then, there were only four levels, four areas of focus, I should have said. Now, one of the things that we've been doing since the SWOT analysis was done is we've been forming these subcommittees out there to get, to start actually working to, again, recruit more students, retain more students and have a higher student satisfaction rate. And you can see the ones that are currently working right now. And I picked this design on purpose because they all fit together. It's almost like a honeycomb. If we can continue to do this in this way, this will be successful. But we have a group right now working in Terrell. Matter of fact, there, I think, our first, our oldest group, they started working probably two months ago or so. So they've already seen some good success with what they're doing over there. We've got a retention group. I mentioned the safety and security group. There's an academic group, dual credit, recruiting, workforce, campus beautification, marketing, and then student services. And so there are probably another, what would you guess? Another seven committees that will be in this honeycomb together with us. And when that's all done, we'll come back and let you know what the goals that they set are and how we're going to be moving everything forward. And I told you I wanted to talk about that. And I walked off and forgot to have you talk about it. Okay, sorry about that.
But we did with the committees. We chose to take this opportunity to revamp all of our committee work and to make sure that everything was fitting in with other pathways in our SIM goals. So in addition to these committees, we also have our non-SIM committees that we're structuring in the same format. And we actually just sent out that job form today to all of the TBCC employees. So our next step is we're going to do the membership of each of the committees and then they'll start writing their goals.
And the goal, one of our goals is that not anyone serves on, you know, some places you see someone serving on six different committees. Well, it's hard to focus when you're on six different committees and do your full-time job. So we're limiting the number of committees that someone can be on. And if you're chairing a committee, then it's limited to even one. So we're trying to keep that to mind. Are there questions about that down in the dirty quick look at SIM?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Today, what are the recruiters, the recruiters bringing back you? You said they were going to bring positive or negative remarks back from the ISDs. So what are those positive, negative remarks today?
We're getting a lot of, really, a lot of things back. And I'm not going to be able to remember everything because they're actually using a spreadsheet. They're going to use something that professional baseball teams use now. It's a spreadsheet that looks, when we're talking about somebody, they list everything about that person. One of the things that we're hearing is, oh, we are glad to see you. Oh, we're glad at the things you can do for us. I mean, one of the things that Blake has suggested that we do is give feedback back to the ISDs on how their students do here, obviously in aggregate. So we wouldn't be dealing, you know, detailing any ones in particular grades. But they've never had that before. So if we can say to them, hey, your folks, on average, you know, 70% don't do so well in our math classes. How can we work with you to help your students perform better in math lessons or English or whatever the issue is? So they're very pleased with the things we're bringing to the table. I mean, we're bringing something to the table that, like the Outstanding Teacher Award, Outstanding Counselor Award for the schools. They're very happy about that, too. Couple of them have said, where you been? And, you know, we take that and we listen and we say, we're really sorry. Now, we didn't mean to ignore you. I mean, it has been like two years of COVID, but, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't even get in the schools at that point. But I would say very, all of them to a school have been happy to work with us and want to partner with us even more than they already are. One of the things that really made me, I don't know, I wanted to cry almost. I just smiled because we had someone who said to Blake, what do you know about this SIM thing? He said, well, I'm on the committee. She said, well, I've been asked to serve on a committee. This was a counselor in one of the ISDs. I've been asked to serve on one of those committees and I don't, we think it's a good idea. She said, I'm kind of excited about it because it's something new. So we're even reaching out to them to get them to serve on our committee so they can advise us from the inside, not just the outside. And I can, matter of fact, when I tell you, I can bring you a lift of those comments and I'd be happy to do that, where Blake can do that.
Secondly, focus two, you mentioned that there's hazards on campus that are not repaired. What are those hazards and what do we have to do to get them repaired?
We're working on those now. We report those hazards to our facilities, folks, groundskeepers and whoever they happen to fall under. And so they are in the process of being repaired, but they haven't been noticed necessarily.
And what are those?
We've got one, well, I mentioned the lights. That's probably the biggest thing for students is they want more light on the campus. But we've got one place that's kind of, I think it's right in front of the LRC. And it's where an irrigation piece has, you know, obviously been irrigating. And there's a hole underneath it that's about this deep and it's about this wide. And so when the officers were walking around, you know, because when you're just walking around, you don't notice things like that. But now they've got to check this. And so they're walking around now, they're noticing those and they're saying, okay, we need to report this because this is a tripping hazard. So they could fall on that and twist the neck. So those kinds of things.
And can we get a copy of these slides? Can you, can you send it to us?
Absolutely. Roma has the whole slide.
I can save it.
Perfect. Do that, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
And again, happy to answer any questions now or at a later time.
Anybody else have any other question? I think you can tell we're very excited about, and we were back in March when Dr. Parnell came on board, back in January. We knew that he was going to provide this opportunity for this college. And we feel like it's going to be a positive move. And I think he's got everybody, Dr. Spazera, and he's got everybody involved. And I think it's great.
Thank you.
They're doing a very good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I think, unless anybody has any questions for me?
Dr. King, I do have one question or to Dr. Parnell. David Mock, and thanks for your presentation. I know we've heard a good deal about this and see an awful lot of potential that could be helpful to our college. But like everything else, it involves money. And we've already budgeted for 2122 at 47.5. Not a small sum, but let's hope that proves to be a bargain. But we're looking now at a contract for five years. So now we're looking at, you know, closer to a quarter million. So I guess my question is, or my question specifically is, is a five-year contract necessary and if it is, why? Because otherwise, something that is new to us, not entirely new to you, it seems to me might have a shorter life if for whatever reason, an exit might be indicated. I've just never been fond of these long-term vendor contracts where we're obligating others, you know, down the road.
Thank you, Mr. President, Trusty Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President, Trusty Monk. It's a good question. If you're not familiar with what CRN can offer, it is understandable that it would seem like we collect the data once it's begun. But we're collecting data on every incoming class of students that comes in. And we're collecting that data so that we can use it to track the students, assess how our programs are working, find out how those students found us. All the myriad of questions we can answer. And then follow those students all the way through to their graduation and into their donating donor, donor years, I guess that's the word, into the donor years. And so if we were to have it for two years, then we would be able to benefit for those two years, but we wouldn't be able to benefit long-term. And so it is something that we need to keep going with.
I guess I'm thinking, is it a consideration to commit for one year and negotiate an additional option? In other words, apart, something that moves away from committing the school to pay, again, you know, $230,000, $240,000 over five years, whether we like it or don't. Again, my question doesn't surround the product. You guys are sold and I think you've sold us and that's fine. But I'm just asking, is that a possibility or has that question been asked?
The question has been asked and certainly any, we could do a 10-year contract, if either of them backed a two-year contract, we can do any of those. But if our long-term goal is to move forward, growing our enrollment, increasing our retention, and then also, also in there, helping our students have a better satisfaction rate, it's not a one-year deal. It's just, I mean, it's one of these things where you need to track those students, track them and continue to track them to see where our gaps are. So when a student first comes in, we, you know, like I said, we're trying to track those students better. We're trying to measure them better. We're trying to do a lot of different things. But if I can't follow them throughout their time here, then I don't know where they might have fallen out. I don't know where they might have succeeded. I don't know what program we were using that might have helped them succeed. So this is a long-term commitment. And I, and I would, I mean, if I were an advice giving kind of person, I would say it's better to do the long-term because it will reap benefits.
Also, it's going to help us be eligible, to be able to look at our data to know what brands that we would be eligible in applying.
That's very true.
Because right now we have a hard time of pulling out special population and this is going to help us with that.
Well, again, I don't question that there is a long-term commitment involved. But long-term commitments are an indication of satisfaction with the product once it's put in place. I'm simply saying, I think it would be responsible on our part to be telling this provider that we're with you for one year and we're optioning for an additional one or four. But such that you haven't contracted, regardless of what may take place, for a full five-year period. It would just be my preference, and I've heard what you've said and I fully appreciate that. But I still maintain a disagreement with a five-year commitment if a shorter term with options can be negotiated. Because the school gives up nothing and in fact, the school gains an important advantage of being able to say, folks, this is not working like we thought it was going to. We need to move to something else. Or maybe you just simply see what you think's a better platform. If you're in a five-year deal, you're in a five-year deal. So.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that remains, you know, my position is that we should look at a shorter term if we can. I'd prefer to see that. And with that, I'll respect the majority, certainly.
I would urge you against the idea of looking from platform to platform because the implementation efforts that we'll go into this, while this one is easier than most, easier is not easy. And we will be implementing a new platform every year and that will be time, that will be money. And that will be money spent that we probably should not, we don't. It is like our campus product or that matter, our colleague product. It's not something that we would want to go and, we're going to do colleague for this year, we'll do people's office next year, we'll do banner the following year. It's not something that we want to change out. It's just too time intense to start over every year or so.
I think somehow we skipped down to item number nine on the agenda. So maybe we'll get down to number nine and give everybody an opportunity to think about it. And then when we get there, we can talk about it again.
I'd like to make a comment. We really appreciate the work. It just seems to me that you mentioned that. You know, right now, leadership, John Cole, we're all excited about this, but as people leave, we're going to go. It is important to have a system in place that you have other institutions that are trying to understand this and if it's working, we can go on, otherwise it's going to fail.
And that's what's correct. Thank you for saying that. We are working on, and we can call it a succession plan, for lack of a better terminology. But we are looking at people who can replace us at some point because, you know, like we're starting this and that's a great, that's a great part of what we're doing. And I've got some experience behind it and that helps as well. But at some point, we need to pass it on to the next generation of people and let them work on it as well because our ideas will get stale. I mean, at some point, you know, my, our brand-new ideas are not brand-new anymore. And so we need to have more people out there. And so we've been putting a succession plan in place to be able to take over some of these roles as they've been moved forward.
The same way, it's going to be always changing, which is good. I'm glad to see you're putting some checks and balances in there, some ways to measure the success or not, and even fix it all. Just having stated goals, stated, I refer to the new reports. They're so often, reporting if we're going to continue.
Every goal leaves a mark, though, which means they're measurable and they're timed since the quarter, time designated. There'll be an ending, a starting point, and how long they should take to meet the goals. And unless they meet their goals, chance are, they will be no longer the goals that are going to be born, but unless there's a good reason for them not to have met the goal. I mean, there are some of those out there, too. But normally, in a SIM program, I forecast that this is going to drive this budget enrollment or this is going to increase retention by this. If it doesn't produce that ROI, then we look at the solution number two. And we look at the solution number three. We're going to a different solution because that one didn't work in the timeframe we had.
And I think we should take this there as a clear goal.
One of the things that we committed to you guys early on, if you recall, is a dashboard that we're going to be able to present to you each month. And with an indicator as of what's going on at the college. This is an important part. This will be an important part. These two here are the ones that are putting it together.
I will say out of this, the student services staff now, all of my senior students in student service are putting together their own five-year plans for where they would like, or what they would like their areas to look like, five years down the road. And so that's something that I think is new and a lot of things that we know, this is sort of status quo. Well, this has got people thinking. And so now they're starting to think about where can we be in five years? How can we be serving students better? What can our education be? So, and so it's got people thinking. That's good.
Anybody have any other questions for Dr. Spazera or Dr. Parnell? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you for raising those on.
All right. Thank you. Item number five, considered, the August 30th, 2021 board meeting. I hear motion to approve the then presented. Chair makes that motion.
Second.
Dr. Perry seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like signs, motion carries. All right, consider and discuss due life financial faith.
Yeah, David's going to do that for us.
All right. Norma's going to bring that up for us. One of the things I want to point out, try to start doing this a little differently. This is July that we're recording on, but I wanted to start trying to give you kind of where we're at on the next run. So you'll see, we've got August up here and clearly that being the end of the year, we're not finished because we have dozens of accruals, year-end increases we have to do. But I wanted to talk about a few things, kind of all this new format. Tuition fees, you'll notice that, you know, we talked about enrollment and so I know that's on everybody's mind, but July, we're at 12 meetings, full of 12 meetings. You'll notice it drops to 11.6, couple of reasons. One is we're truing up things at the end of the year, which includes waivers and exemptions. But the bigger thing that Stephanie and her group are going to be correcting is colleague doesn't give us away on scholarships, waivers and exemptions and things like that to put them in the right term, get their awarded in August. You know, the fall starts in August, financial aid gets awarded. And so that's when it hits our votes. And so what we've got to do as part of our year-end increase, not about world scholarships, we've got to move those to September. Colleague gives us a way to do that, but tuition, it doesn't give us a way to do it on other things. We have to do it right. So that number will go back up. Under other sources, again, that's going to be closer to the projected number. We drew down the fall and spring funding. In August, we haven't made that journal entry yet. So that's going to go back up to 3.6 that you see on the project. Another couple of million dollars. Under other benefits, I've got that highlighted on page one. You have kind of a combination there. A couple of things that the board was gracious enough to do is we got a Christmas bonus or extra check, but also in this line are the $1,500 checks that went out as a part of the salary stuff. I wanted to point that out. That budget started out at $12,000, but because of those actions, I think we bumped that up a lot. Next page. And this is where I wanted to point out the very fact, if you look in August under scholarships, you see a 2.6 billion. And you look in the first column, a budget of 1.9 and actuals in July, 1.7. But trust me, folks, we didn't award that many scholarships for this year for one month. And I want to drive that home because again, those are for the fall of '21. So those belong in September. So what's going to happen is we're going to pull all those fall, out of August and put them in September. So that means less expense and your excess is going to come back up. Colleague just doesn't give us a way to do it. It's just part of what accountants do at the end of the year. So at the bottom of the page, you see your revenue over excess right now is 4.4. I think that number is going to obviously go back up closer to the 6.5 projected, just straight up revenue over expense after we make those entries. And I know that's a lot of accounting gymnastics, but I don't know of any other way to explain it, so. Any questions about that? Norma, I think we're going to go down two pages now to the cash. Yeah, this is as of July 31st. There's not a lot of change in cash. You're still looking at $27 billion overall.
Did I miss it?
No, you got it. You're there.
Okay.
You stood. At the bottom of the page and then the capital reserve, 16,641. Next page is your investment report. And we spread this out among a bunch of CDs, cap reserve, 16,641. We didn't have a lot of transactions in cap reserve this year, this month. The next page will be your summary on cap reserve. This month, we did not have any activity in the repairs and improvements on the Terrell parking lot. We, there will be August expenses. We just didn't have any in July, so I know everybody wondered why there weren't, you know, there. I just wanted to point that out. Your regular transfer and your interest income, what's going in there? Next page is the payments over $25,000. Everybody a chance to look at that, see if anybody has any questions?
So my, they do have pledge collateral this month?
Yes, sir. It's a good question. Every month, I pull out one of my audit work papers every month. My executive assistant takes the bank statement, puts in the cash and the pledge securities and we reconcile that and give it to the all earners.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on that? You see a lot of, some campus improvements there. Roof replacement, some north hall. Everybody's good. Let's go to talk about HIRF for a minute. This is as of 9/8. This is what we spent, what we spent it on. You heard me just talk about we've pulled down the loss revenue for fall of '20, spring of '21, as well as the, obviously the last summer. Total of $4,977,000 as we sit here today. Now, one of the things I am working on is the summer, this past summer. The reason it's going to take a little bit because of those things you just saw me talk about where you had some of next year's revenue and expenses still in this year. Well, you've got to move all those out of the way before we can draw some numbers. So my intention is, is to go ahead and draw the lost revenue for this summer. We have some uncertainty in front of us, but if we have lost revenue, I'm not taking the attitude, let's take it, it's there, so. And I believe the next page kind of shows you looking forward a little bit. This is the money that we have left after we've drawn those things that I just talked about. 5,000,536. And Norma, if you'll scroll down, you know, I want to talk about, did y'all recall a little further? Let's go on to the next page. Those of y'all that were on the budget committee, these are the numbers for '21, '22 that are part of the budget. Now, you know, the assumption I made was that enrollment would be the same as last year. What we've heard at this point is that it may not be as good as that. But we're just talking about fall for one thing. And so I just want to point out to everybody that there is money to cover this year, really, no matter what the shortage is. The unknown, you'll see that we haven't projected out is '22, '23. The only unknown, well, the only known are the loss of contact hours. Okay? So, you know, we have a little bit, that negative 116 will grow as we spend money, that kind of thing. But again, we don't know what's going to happen in the spring or next summer. Hopefully enrollment turns around and we don't even have to use all this money. But I want everybody to understand that it is in the budget. And we have money to cover it this year. The last screen is kind of an update on the student portion. Overall, we've been awarded 7.1. We dispersed right at 2.1 million. And we've got 5 billion left to disperse. And does anybody have any questions about that? I have one other thing. Well, my one other thing is sitting behind me. Her name is Jennifer Ball. She's like, raise your hand back. She's our new senior business analyst. She's going to take care of those little bitty projects like budget. So those of y'all on the budget committee will be seeing a lot of her. We're glad to have her. She brings a lot of experience. And we were finally able to fill a position, so we're excited.
At what time does this come to an end?
I don't know, whenever y'all are through, I'll tell them. Were you talking about HIRF?
Yeah.
The student portion, I don't believe has an extension. So that should be, our deadline is in May. Within 90 days of that date on the institutional side, we can apply for a one-year extension. Well, we can apply for an extension up to one year. Now, there are a lot of colleges are starting to talk about that, but we're not within the 90 days, so we can't do anything about it. And there's a lot of discussion about, will they let you have it? Is it going to be easily obtained, that kind of thing? I believe it will be. You know, because we've still got that contact hour funding loss that's ahead of us. So that's my hope. But, you know, like a lot of the guidance we've gotten, unfortunately, you don't know until you get there sometimes. But May is the, I think about mid-May is the first initial deadline of one year. But I fully expect us to apply for an extension.
Anyone have any more questions, David?
And we, you know, initial money for the students, we got, I forget how much it was in the first year. Is that part of this?
Right. You notice up there, we've got lists as HIRF 1, HIRF 2, HIRF 3. Well, the first two rounds are gone. And so what we're on is HIRF 3 and that's all that's left. Now, some of this came kind of in rapid succession, once they started awarding. And they did exactly the same thing for the institutional, so. But that's kind of where we stand and that's what's left, so. You seem concerned there, you know? Okay. We'll make sure. We'll make sure.
All right. No other questions out here. Motion approved it. Dr. Carey makes motion. Gary Stone seconded it. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All phones like sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider and discuss safety and security reports.
Uh, board, this is a report that I think gets done every three years, as mentioned in the memo. Um, it was finalized in August thirty first, twenty twenty one. Uh, the, the Texas Education Agency requires public junior college districts to report the results of their safety and security audit to the Texas School Safety Center. Uh, and the, this, this is what this report is. Also requires that report must be presented to the Board of Trustees and signed by the President of the Junior College District. That doesn't need approval, but it just needs to be, uh, presented to you guys. Uh, if you have any questions about this checklist, a chief newbie spent many hours, many days, many, a lot of time working on this and getting, and getting it done. Dr. Parnell, do you have anything else to add?
Um, I think you, you are just, Dr. King, um, we do, we bring this to you every three years and it, it sort of tracks our ability to plan for long-term safety and security as well as today's safety and security. Um, and if you go through and look at this, you could see that the score we received this year can be compared to the score we received three years ago. Uh, and this is one of the things that brought that second SWAT item up is because um, there's some things in the long-term planning part of this that I think we needed to be, and that's part of what, at least what they're doing right now.
So does anybody have any questions about this? If not, there's no action that's required.
Item number eight, consider and discuss the purchase of the SD one solution. Provider, provided by Windstream for Athens, Terrell, Kaufman and material HSC campuses.
As, as I mentioned in the memo that was sent out with that, and I think we had some long discussions about that this summer in our budget committees and this was basic, this was approved in the twenty one, twenty two budget. So this is basically, um, to provide us with our internet services. Lonnie Packer, who's in the second row there, raise your hand Lonnie. Uh, he did a really, really good job. He spent probably a year putting all this together, working on it, trying to determine what's the best, uh, packages were, what's the best situation was. We, 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 uh, had something called NetNet and we had NetNet probably for the last twenty years. And NetNet was paying for a lot of our internet services. It was, it was, um, the, um, provided funding was from the state legislature. The state legislature a couple of years ago decided they wouldn't fund it any longer. So they lost their funding. So all the community colleges, there were seven community colleges in NetNet and all of us lost our funding for that. They gave us a year or two warning and let us know in advance so that we could prepare for that. And so that's where we are today. And basically what we're asking for, and there's, there's some information in here. Um, if you have any questions about that, maybe I can answer, maybe I can't. Maybe Lonnie can answer the questions. But basically what we're asking for, and this is what we talked about this summer uh, in the budget workshop, we're asking for approval to, uh, work with Windstream uh, to move us forward, um, with the internet service and at a cost of approximately eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty five dollars and forty four cents. Again, that could vary a little bit, up and down, possibly even down. But, um, that's, that's what the additional cost is that was included in the budget. Uh, additional budget cost for this year. Uh, then that's for our campuses in Athens, uh, Terrell and, uh, Kaufman. And then in Palestine, we have a different setup because Windstream wasn't available. Uh, in East Texas, uh, East Tex fiber solution is available there. And that would be an additional cost of somewhere around, again, approximately thirty eight thousand dollars. And this is to put the, um, the infrastructure into where we need for it to be on our campuses because it's not there now, especially in Palestine and some of the other places. It will put our infrastructure there and will also, uh, sort of provide the service for the next year. So. I did the best I could. If you have any questions about it, we got the experts back there to back.
So this is something that used to be completely funded.
Not, not completely. Up, eighty seven thousand dollars was funded by NetNet. Now we have to fund it. Yeah.
Over five.
Uh, this is a five-year contract. This is an annual five-year contract. Yeah. Yeah.
We're not going to ask you more questions. It just keeps getting worse.
Well, I wish I could, probably I'm not explaining it as good as it needs to be explained.
Expensive thing. Purchase, but it's not an option.
Lonnie, did you have anything to add? I know you. David, did you have a question about any, any of this?
I, I think my question really goes back to term and, and I'm not real clear on annual five-year contract. Is, is that same with an annual renewal or a five-year commitment?
I answered that question Lonnie. I know we've talked about that as well.
This, this is a five-year agreement, uh, with each services and there is a, about a ten percent saving per year. So about ten thousand dollars a year for the five-year agreement. And the Palestine location, the minimum contract for five years because they have to build uh, and install five or two kids.
Anybody have any other, other questions?
Well, you're comfortable with the performance guarantees they have to deliver. So if they don't deliver, we've got them out.
We can change services.
Okay.
That's on both contracts.
Yeah, I think that's, that's important. I mean, I, I, my experience with most of these things is they overpromise and underdeliver. Sometimes you don't have a whole lot of options apart from you get out from Dallas and the Midwest.
Lonnie did a lot of, spent a lot of time negotiating with different people before they decided on this. This wasn't just an over that deal.
Who else is on Windstream? Who else is on this, this other?
As in?
Schools or?
Uh,
New Hampshire?
The Windstream, um, there's a lot of larger companies in Dallas. They're actually already serving TVCC. We're just not a direct customer.
Okay.
Palestine, uh, E-Tex Fiber is doing work for the city of Palestine, county. UT, that campus in UT, uh, down in Palestine. They're really building out their infrastructure in Palestine.
And this group is cheaper than the people over there.
They're cheaper than people that already have infrastructure in place. They took the, uh, the grant, the subsidized funds. And I gave it multiple times, uh, lower the cost. And it wouldn't.
Thank you Lonnie for your extra efforts in this program. Any other questions or discussions? If not, I hear a motion then that we approve the purchase of the SD one solution system.
I'm like.
Dr. Charlie makes that motion. I hear a second.
I'll second. Steve.
Steve seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All phones like sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider and, uh, consider and discuss purchase of customer relation management CRM element four fifty one software program.
Again, this is kind of what we were talking about previously. I think the question here is whether or not you would, we want a one-year contract, two-year contract, three-year, four-year, or five-year contract. And so y'all can talk about it. Let me just also say this. We were in Austin last week and this is very, exactly one of the, uh, programs that they were talking about at the, uh, the Aspen Award winners, uh, in, 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 in the country that they were doing. So I don't think there's any question about the value of it. I think it's, it's very, very valuable and very much needed. I guess the question is timeframe. And not that we're not going to do it in the second year, the third year, the fourth year, the fifth year. But do we, do, do, do we have an option of a one-year contract or it probably is going to cost more, I'm assuming?
Well, this is the discounted rate. Uh, it's about a five percent discount per year because we're going for the five year. So norm, their normal, uh, their normal price for this is about fifty thousand dollars roughly. Uh, and so we're getting a little bit of a cut on that because.
It's a long-term deal. So I guess the question is, do we want to do, pay a, a, a five percent premium and do it one year? Or do we want to have that? And, and I guess you're locking it in at this cost for five years. Whereas next year it could be higher, third year it could be higher, fourth year it could be higher.
There's no way to know what they're costing.
Right. Until it's kind of like, yeah, absolutely. So I guess that would be the question.
I mean, I mean, if I can stress again, it's just like in places where you work now and you use software. You don't want to change that software every year. I mean, thinking of Dr. Charlie in his, in his practice, he's got all those things that, that track the medicines and the visits in the office. You're not going to go through and reinvent that every year with a new software package. So like, to me, it's worth it for the discount to go the longer term.
And, and I agree, if you're satisfied with what you got. I, I think.
I can answer that. A good friend of mine in Wyoming still, they use this at Northwest College in Wyoming. Uh, I called him and he said, you know, I don't really know a lot about it because he's my level. Uh, he's never really done a lot with an old company, but he put me in touch with people who deal with this product on their campus. Best thing they've ever done. And I don't remember the exact same thing that he said, but he said, I would highly recommend it. He said, our implementation was seamless and quick. We were able to start using the product day, the day after it was fully implemented. Whereas a lot of these software issues, software systems have a time where you have to build the product after it's been downloaded and everything's set up. This, we can start day one. All we have to do is say, we want this, this, and this, and they will come in and that's ready to go day one. And that's a huge benefit for us because that saves us a full semester of being, we're ready to use this product before we would for, for most of the other products that are out there. So I, I do highly recommend that we do it for, for a longer term. Again, I just, I just think changing in the middle is a good idea. Um, but I will leave that to the decision makers.
And Dr. Parnell, are you familiar with, uh, community colleges in Texas that are using, uh, this same?
I, I, I'm not personally, I haven't been to Texas long enough to have made those kind of connections to know other colleges in Texas are using it. But I know Dr. Dr. King just mentioned one of the colleges that they were talking about when they were at their meeting in, uh, Austin. And this was the software that, that, that a particular prize winner was using. And I guess they thought it was worthwhile is what I, is what I'm understanding from you, Dr. King.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was a Texas school or if that was another school, but.
I, I think all three of the schools that were down there used it. I, I don't know if it was this specific, but they used something very similar to this.
Well, and Dr. Vaziri just told me that Amarillo is one that is using this. And I will tell you that Amarillo is the place that I go to see what's going on well. Uh, if I want to know what's happening, if I have a website that I can find to copy, you know, plagiarism and all that. And I can go find good ideas there. That's where I go to get the good ideas. So if they're using it, then with, between that and what my friend in Wyoming says, I'm completely satisfied with this. Now, obviously we've got them out in the contracts. So if they don't provide what they said they would provide, we have, we have an easy out of the contract. And I know David and I both reviewed the contract and we're both, we're both satisfied with that.
And everybody should realize that Phil's groups spent a lot of time looking at different systems. They, they didn't just say, we think this. I mean, I don't know how many of you guys looked at it.
We looked at at least seven, uh, since I've been here. And I think Blake was looking at more before I even got here. Um, before we finally, you know, on this one. And this one, I will say this too. This was one of the cheaper ones that were out there. We saw them as high as eighty five thousand, I think he said was the most expensive one. I think that one was called Slate. Um, and honestly, it would do more. Um, but it wasn't worth the return on investment on that. I mean, this will do all of what we've asked it to do, what we wanted to do. And so that's why we went with lower cost.
I think you expressed your, your, uh, your judgment and the research that you've done.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, trust me, I'm not saying that again, please.
He said he trusts you, you fellow. David, we all want to hear it.
Do I get any updates or any changes?
Every year, that's going to charge.
Every year, we will give you more. We will get it from directions, you know, or you're not getting ROI, you said. We've got software that would chip for you.
Well, not only that, but the way they've designed this is we can use it ourselves. So if we find out that we didn't think about something we should have thought about in the beginning, we can go back and do that on the fly. Um, now that doesn't mean we're going to go back and catch the data from the year before, but we can start catching immediately once we realize we didn't, we didn't have it. So that's one of the best things I know. There's, there's a lot of these software systems out there that will do a lot of stuff. But nobody who's human can figure out how to make them work. And, and this one is from what I've heard, from what everyone I've talked to has used this and said, this is one that we can do ourselves. And, um, they don't have to rely on somebody else.
And there's not that. I was there. Time to go answer. Let's make up for it.
I've heard nothing about that. And when I looked online and looked in the reviews, I saw nothing for that. Uh, I don't know. Again, if you guys heard anything from the preschools that were using it, but I've heard nothing. Although that is a very common piece out there. And, and sadly, that's one of the veterans. And that, that ERP is one of the veterans too. They're just very expensive and they're massive. Um, the fact that we can, if we will be able to alter this and amend the things we start with, really was what shocked me. Um, into thinking this was the best deal. Because there's always something you forget. And we can go back and change it and make it work. And that's, that's.
Any other questions about? If not, they hear a motion to approve the purchase of the customer relations software program. Uh, Gary makes that motion. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All phones like sign. Motion carries. Item number ten, consider and discuss approval of the non-participation of employees in the state employee charitable contribution program.
Uh, board, again, this is something we do every year and we're basically required to do this to allow our, uh, employees to participate in other, other authorized voluntary deductions out of their paycheck. And, uh, they, they might choose a charitable organization, uh, and be able, that would be previously approved by the board to contribute to, uh, through their payroll deduction. We just ask for approval for this to be done again this year.
Motion.
Okay, Dr. Charlie makes motion. Dr. Carey seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All phones like sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consider and discuss action on party of education program review.
Uh, again, board, we, uh, I sent a lot of this information out to you earlier. Hopefully you've been at an opportunity to look through it and read it. Um, we did, I did, we did meet with the budget committee last week and gave them the opportunity as well to a- ask questions and to go through this because this is going to probably have an impact on our budget, uh, probably an impact, uh, from taking possibly funds out of contingency, uh, in the future that we didn't, non-budgeted items. So, uh, just let you know, we, again, we had, we had a DOE audit back in July of twenty sixth, the twenty thirtieth. And we got, we had an exit conference on September the eighth. Uh, the findings that they had in the, and hopefully you've had a chance to go through and look at those. Those were, again, you have to keep in mind, those were seventeen, eighteen, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen years. We know we had problems, uh, in financial aid area during those years and you, y'all are well aware of those. And those were brought out with Gollub, uh, Pedden, Morgan, Pedden, yeah, Gollup, Pedd, Morgan, Petty, whichever it was, a single auditor brought these out to us, um, these issues out to us in their eighteen, nineteen audit. Uh, we had an action committee that we put together. We worked on the, uh, improving these audit areas, uh, during the year. The next year when the nineteen, twenty audit came out from our Gollup, Petty, Morgan, uh, single audit, uh, it showed basically we had done a lot of, of, uh, improvement. We only had, we went from fourteen, uh, recommendations and most of those were related to financial aid to three. So we feel very good about where we are today. We feel like we've made some major strides. We feel like that is because of the leadership uh, in the financial aid office. We've had the same person in there now for about three years uh, as, as leader and it's worked out very good for us. And also we feel like colleague has made a significant difference in terms of how we do things. It's not, no longer manually done. It's done, through the computer and done other ways where, uh, it's a lot better for us. However, uh, they're looking at seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. And so. And so when we reply to them, we're going to be able to show them that we've made the results and done positive things. But they're also going to be looking at individual, potentially individual students back in those years, timeframes. And it's probably, possibly, it is going to cost some money, possibly, for us to be able to hire someone potentially to come in and help us with that audit review. We don't know exactly. We tried to get back in touch with the auditor, DOE auditor. I thought we would get back in touch with them last week. That didn't happen. She told us that it would be after October first that we could basically get in touch with her. So we're not real sure about the follow-up, what she's asking us to do in the follow-up. But we're very concerned about having to go through and audit individual students for the year seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. Well, we did not, the last one of these audits was done in two thousand and fourteen. Dr. Forgie obviously was here then. I talked to him last week in Austin as well. And I talked to him about the two thousand and fourteen audit and some of the things they did. They were also asking two thousand and fourteen to do all students the previous year or two years. And they only provided thirty, or is it sixty? I can't remember. Thirty or sixty, because it's thirty, thirty students that they did after that audit for, as a follow-up. So we're not real clear. We're not real sure, but that's kind of where we are with it. I'm able to answer any questions that anybody may have about that. What we're asking and what we're requesting, I did talk to Lee Porter. I think it was mentioned in our budget committee meeting last week that we would like to give authorization either to the budget committee or to the president, myself, to be able to use contingency funds for this purpose. And Lee said it would be better to authorize the president with the approval of the budget committee. So that's basically what we're asking for, you know, and is for you to authorize the use of contingency funds if needed for the follow-up with approval from the budget board committee. And if it, you know, if it's next October before this comes up again, then we'll bring it back to the full board. And we'll do that anyways. But that's kind of where we are with it. Any questions that you may have?
Did they find anything we didn't already know about?
Pretty much no. Everything they found, it was also found earlier by Gollum, Morgan, and Petty.
There's nothing to.
The findings, the findings that they had, that they listed in there were pretty much the same as they were with Gollum, Morgan, and Petty. Now, when they go, if they, the follow-up, it may be a different scenario. The follow-up was with individual students. So I'm sure there's going to be some issues with individual students in terms of the way it was done in seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen.
They're asking us to recalculate every single student for two years. And so that's what we're trying to find out. That's what the resources would be needed for. Ten to fourteen thousand. We don't have recalculations. Are we going to maybe go with a different plan that might not be quite so clear as they were at seven first?
I think that's the plan right now, is to see what we can do to lessen that burden. Now, whether or not we choose as the president, whoever, to make a suggestion about how many we would like to do or simply say to them, this is what was done before. Can we do something similar to that? But, you know, we'll have some wording in there, but it would be, my big concern is, I know what the initial brief report said, but I want the larger report and I don't want to be able to ask the auditors questions about this. And until we can do that, all we really know is they want us to recalculate every student for those two years. And that we know, that we know we used the wrong, we used the formula incorrectly to calculate the financial aid. That's all we know of this formula. And we knew that before. So.
And we corrected it.
We have. And even they have not, the auditors acknowledged that on the outbreak.
We talked to Kevin Cashin also about this a little bit. If we could get some help possibly from some other areas, Kevin works for Gollum, Morgan, and Petty. And so we're going to do everything that we can. We just, this could, we could, we could be, we could start working on this potentially or need to start working on this before the October break. And what we'd like to have is authorization if we need to do that, with approval from the board budget committee to do that.
And of course, the deadline, y'all said the other day, is it ninety?
We don't, ninety days. It could, that could be extended, maybe sixty days. This could go on for six or seven months very easily.
But the clock doesn't start ticking until they turn the report over to us, which could be three months.
But obviously, we'd rather not be flat-footed at that point. If we have to go through any number of these and recalculate, we'd rather be getting, you know, where we can do that quickly and correctly.
Sixty days won't cut it.
Yeah, that's not a bunch of, that's not much time after we get the report for that number of students.
I have listed, I have provided for y'all the findings that they had. And again, you can go back and compare those to the findings that Gollum, Morgan, Petty had in eighteen, nineteen, their eighteen, nineteen audit. And it's pretty much the same thing. Did y'all agree with that?
I think so too, yeah. I wasn't here for that first audit, but from what I've read, they sound like the exact same issues.
Do you think Gollum, Morgan has walked somebody through this before and has an idea of what would be accepted?
But Kevin, he doesn't have the resource. I mean, there are auditors and they do financial audits. But I don't think they would have the resources. You know, we've got some resources spotted.
Okay.
But this will take, this would be weeks and weeks.
I'm just curious if somebody's dealt with them enough to know what we can pass for in this city.
I think these other folks that we've got.
I've been in contact with a group out of Atlanta and they do this for a living. They not only will fill people's personnel issues, but they will come in and audit records like this after we've done some of these program reviews. And so they're good at this. As a matter of fact, they've got someone who just did it for another college that they put us directly in touch with.
And we're also talking to other community colleges in Texas that have had an issue with similar to this to see what kind of work through that they had to do with it. So we're trying to do everything we can.
Call in all your friends.
We're trying to. Now, I dealt with this for about, you know, a year and a half, about three, four years ago. It's not a very pleasant experience. As you well know, it wasn't one of the things I listed on my plans of things to do for this year. So it is what it is. Anybody on the audit committee? Again, we had about a two-hour meeting last week and I think it was very good. And they helped us through some of the things that you guys are helping us through as well.
Dr. King, I would just say, you know, from all that we heard, you know, this is one of those things that, that yes, there were some things wrong. We were aware of that and we had a pretty significant turnover in the financial aid area. Unfortunately, our, and our federal oversight group has decided to select those years where there were known discrepancies. And yet, at this point, per Dr. King's summary, that until questions can be asked of the party, apparently, at least at this point, in charge of, you know, kind of writing the rules that are owed for what we'll have to do going forward, is not available for such a discussion. So I think, I think our team's hands are a bit tied until they can have that discussion, have those questions presented, get answers to them. And I think on that, we should, should be firm. And that we certainly should not go off on a hugely, and huge is a good, or expensive undertaking to review, you know, individual records that can turn, that would turn into the thousands and thousands. So I think, and I agree, I think where our group's coming from is to say, well, we don't know when we're going to have that, that conversation or have that audience, but we may need to start responding quickly. And would need to have resources available and support for making, you know, that sort of commitment. I think, and, you know, Steve and Brad and Mike Kimber here are here and can share if there's a, you know, a different take on it, that, you know, I don't think our group was supposed to be being a sort of buffer. You know, if the president's authorized to sign off, it's really the budget finance committee or whatever we're calling it, to say, you know, we've heard the other part of the story now and we agree, we need to go ahead and kick this thing off. Because the pressure could begin to mount, you know, fairly, fairly quickly. They just don't know, you know, until, until they're able to, to talk to this person. And that looks like sometime after October one. And unless we pull the whole board back, you know, together for that, that review, I guess it's a little bit of a working group concept. With that, I'll, I'll pass it to Steve or Mike.
I don't see any choice but to authorize some of the use of it. I mean, I feel like, once they come up with a decision, in case, we'll have a lot bigger idea. We're not led to figure out. I trust they'll try to be as prudent as we can.
Any other questions back? Okay, we need approval to authorize signatures from the Department of Education for review. I hear motion, we make it. Mike makes that motion. Sir, Dr. Terry seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, before you. Yes, sir. Before you move past discussion, if you will allow, the recommended action is nonspecific, you know, with regard to the order of events. And I would support that there be a buffer, you know, whether it's this finance committee or something other. I think that also adds a needed layer for Dr. King. If he's the guy that's going, you know, put it on the dotted line and actually execute, that it's known to the board that there are others that have vetted the, you know, that need. So I would just like to, I guess, inquire, does that motion incorporate that, that course of action?
Yeah, it would be authorize the president with the approval from the budget board.
Yes, sir.
Do we amend that motion to say that?
Yeah.
All right. Motion's been made. Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Adam number twelve, consider and discuss the annual DBCC board self-evaluation.
Again, board, this is something, as you know, we do each year. It's Southern Association requirement. And I don't know that we, how much detail we want to go into. We've already had, I sent this information out to you earlier. You've already had an opportunity, hopefully, to look through the questions that were asked and some of the responses that were made in terms of board performance. We would, I would, I think I've already had some discussion with some of the other board members, including Ray. And we have a, what we would like to recommend is we have a board of trustee roles and responsibilities manual. I have that in front of you. I think Norman made you a copy of it. What, there's some things that we would like to look at, look at this. There's some changes that need to be made. There's some revisions that need to be made. And what we would like to be able to do is have you review this, look over it yourself as an individual, and respond back to me. I'll give you some sort of a deadline. I don't have that in front of me, but I'll send it to, send you a reminder to do this. And if you will, if you look through here and make whatever changes or recommendations. There are some things that I would like to see us do as a board. One of the things that I think it would be very beneficial would be a board committees, permanent board committees. We've talked about that in the past. That's a very, that's, I believe, a very productive and a good way to have more participation by board members, is to have a board committees. And so one of the things that we can do is that we can add that to this, that we would like to be able to do that. Other things that we'd like to be able, new board training. We're going to, we're going to probably have some new board officials coming on at some point in time in the future. And when we do, I think it's important to have specific training that they can have and we can line that out and maybe get that approved as well. And maybe also, there's some things that you thought of that we could do as a board together that could be beneficial. So I would ask that you take this with you, look over it. And at the next board meeting, the October board meeting, we'll come back. And we'll, at that time, we can talk about whatever recommendations that you may have made, whatever suggestions that you may have made, and see if we can get a consensus on what we think we could do to update this and also make it, well, updated. I mean, I don't know, I think it was done in two thousand and nineteen, but it's got some stuff in it that definitely needs to be changed. So that's, that's what I would, I would like to be able to do. Again, I've had some discussion with some of the other board members and I think that's would be beneficial. If you guys think it would be beneficial. So does anybody have any opposition to that or any questions about that? Or do you have any other ideas of things that we might be able to do as a board to be, to be better? We can all be better. We can always be better. And so anybody have anything else to add to that? Is that okay? Then, there's really no action. I would, I would, I would highly ask that you look at this. There are three or four questions on there that are lower than some of the others. And, you know, you can look at it and say, and those are things that we may need to do. Participation is one of them. New training is one of them. Professional development is one of them. So there's some things that we can do and we can talk about next time that we meet and see if we can get a consensus on what we could do better. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything else to add? I'll send you an email out. I'll send an email out to everybody. Probably two weeks from today would be a good time to be able to get that back so that Norman and I can have some time to make the changes that we need to make before your October board meeting. So I'll just say two weeks from today would be good. I don't know what that date is. Somebody can look at that and see, and I'll send you a reminder.
All right.
What is two weeks from today? October the eleventh. And give us, Norman and I, time to make whatever changes and send it back to you and then get ready for the October board meeting. October the eleventh.
All right, item thirteen, consider and discuss personnel matters.
We have, again, personnel matters as we do each month. We have new hires. Jennifer, it's good to have you here today. And she was introduced earlier in Kobe Calhoun, was, is a new recruiter that we've hired to replace James Jones. And you can see some of the reclassifications and other adjustments and other, other things that we have there. Does anybody have any questions about any of those? Not we'd ask for approval of the personnel matters.
Steve makes that motion. Terry seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number fourteen, we need to convene to a executive session pursuant to the Texas government code, section five, one, point zero, seven, one of the Texas open meeting acts.
Let me mention to those of you that may be watching or listening Zoom, since this is an executive session, the Zoom meeting will be ended and we will not bring it back. So if you have any questions about anything that happens after the meeting, well, it'll be in the agenda that will be, or the minutes that will be posted in the morning. But David, David, I guess you'll stay on and everybody else will get off, will be off.
Very good.
Is there a secure place for David to be on?
Yes, there will be, yeah. Okay, excuse me, call me.
Okay, we've got to have a motion in a second to go into executive session.
All right. I hear motion for going to the executive session. Dr. Terry makes it. Mike seconded it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right, we're, we're in the post session.